Call this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Allen Green.
Here.
Lafore.
Here.
Miss Stravich.
Here.
Rindell.
Ricks.
Warren.
Here.
Would entertain a motion to excuse councilors for not being here tonight?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Okay, we have two that are out of town, Rindell and Emily Allen, and Tim Ricks is ill today. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the previous minutes, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Reproved, say nay. Motion passes. This time we'll have any audience comments for any non-agenda items, so if you have anything that you'd like to bring to the council for anything that's not on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name, and you have three minutes to address the council.
My name is William Stanley. I live at 35525 Pound. About the pig that we approved last year, or you approved, I was against the pig then, and I'm still against the pig. I've got nothing against my neighbors, they're nice people, we get along. Does the pig stink? Yes. Mayor Ricks made a comment about, he talked to his vet about pot-bellied pigs. Said they're quite popular and making good pets. At the time, I didn't know it, this pig weighs 300 pounds. This is not a pet. This is a farm animal. And the lady that owns the pig said, "It comes in the house." No, it doesn't. That enclosure that they built for that pig, Mayor Ricks asked if the pig was going to be in there all the time, and she said no. Well, they brought that pig over right around the Fourth of July, and it has not been out of that pen since. Now, okay, I'll live with the pig, but I want some assurances that whichever one of us goes first, me or the pig, that there won't be another. You know, they got their way because this was a pet that they had in the city for three years illegally, against the ordinance, but that's neither here nor there. If this pig meets its demise, I don't want another, and that's all I want, some assurances that there will not be another pig.
I know when we approve that, we have a one-year period, and then have to come back to get approved again, especially if there's some particular comments and other feedback from neighbors like yourself.
This is the one year from that meeting, now.
It is now?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why I'm here.
Okay, okay.
Because the mayor said we revisit it in a year.
Yes, okay.
And...
I wasn't sure exactly when that year ran up.
It's a farm animal. It's not a pet. They don't play with it, you know, she goes out there and feeds it every day, and gives it water, and the kids will go out there and talk to it sometimes, but it, you know, it's a farm animal, very big farm animal, 300 pounds.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll have the administration look at it, and then we'll, since it is a year, and you've come back, we'll address it. Thank you.
Come back in another year?
Well...
No, what we've been doing is if we've received any complaints on any of the animals that we've approved, chickens, pigs, if we receive a complaint, then we bring them back. If we haven't received a complaint, then we don't. Since this is the first time getting the complaint, now we'll start that process of coming back.
Okay, so...
So if you're, I guess, well, I'll call you now that you've made the complaint, I'll call you and follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other audience comments for the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I would ask that City Council add item number seven, Adoption of the City Clerk Human Resource Assistant Job Description, and a copy of that is in place at your table, in front of you at the table.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other items? No? Okay, thank you. Motion being ordered to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion made and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Agenda is adopted. We have a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported. There is no discussion on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We'll move on to items for consideration. Tonight, we do have seven items for consideration, first one being consideration of request to keep chickens 3531 Park Street, Kelly Lanart. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider a petition from Kelly Lanart to keep up to three egg-laying chickens on property located at 35311 Park Street. The property is rectangular in shape and has 82 and a half feet of frontage on Park Street and is 226 feet deep, as we have with all of our requests under this part of the Code of Ordinances. We have mailed letters to all adjoining property owners. We did receive one back that was in favor of the chickens, and that letter is in your packet tonight, and I believe, is Kelly here tonight? Yes, Kelly is here tonight if there's any questions for her.
Chair would entertain a motion, if there's one, before discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the position of Kelly Lanart to keep up to three chicken hens on the property located at 35311 Park Street, subject to the following conditions: The chickens allowed will be female, chicken hens, no roosters shall be allowed. As approved, this approval shall be subject to one-year review if any complaints are received from the neighbors regarding the chickens.
Support. Motion made and supported. We have discussion?
I think, I mean, we have turned down chickens within the city limits, and we have approved them, and one of the criteria I look at is neighbors, there's no disapprovals to it, and then the subject of the distance from all the houses. It's one of those unique properties where it's very deep, and all the properties surrounding it are deep, so I think with only being three chickens and no objections to it at this point, I think we should be fine.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Any audience participation on this item? If you want to say anything, you can come to the podium and let us know about your chickens.
Just want to lay some eggs in my backyard so that I can eat them, basically. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other audience participation? No? Okay. Back to the table? Okay. Being none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any disapproval, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Good luck.
Item number two, Consideration of Special Event Request, Richmond Police Officers Association for Pig Roast and Golf Cart Rodeo. Mr. City Manager.
City Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from the Richmond Police Officers Association to host the Second Annual Pig Roast and Golf Cart Rodeo in Beebe Park on Sunday, August 7, 2022, from noon to 4:00 p.m. The RPOA is a nonprofit association of the police and communications officers of the Richmond Police Department. The pig roast will be a picnic-style event using the pavilion in the area to the west from the Tyke Track to the community center, and there's an attached map in your background brief showing that area. They're also planning to have a golf cart rodeo, and this event will take place at the back half of the festival field directly across from the community center. I believe we have dispatcher Dana McLean, Officer Ryan Roberts, and as well as our chief here tonight, so Dana, if you want to come up and cover anything that I missed?
Good evening. So last year was our first time doing the pig roast, and we have to say we were blown away about the community coming out. We actually sold about 220 food tickets. I believe there was actually more people there that did not purchase food. The bake sale was amazing, and the golf cart rodeo, a lot of people had fun with that, hoping to increase that. The only change we may make is instead of having three events for the golf carts, just having two. Might make it go a little bit faster instead of the three. Being our first time, it's a, you know, let's see what's going to happen. I think we know where we made our mistakes and our errors, and hopefully the weather will hold out and we'll get more people. Our bake sale made over $600, and that was only on just donated goods. So hopefully you guys will approve it for us, and we can do it again.
Thank you.
And we are going to be raffling off the golf cart. Tickets hopefully will be going on sale in June. We're going to have to hope, we've got to get more because the price of the golf cart went up almost $2,000, and that's at cost.
Yeah.
But just at cost, it's $8,300, so retail, you can imagine what it's going to be. So we're going to try to sell 1,200 tickets for that and raffle it off that date. Does anyone have any questions?
I think we do.
No? Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event request from the RPOA for a pig roast and golf cart rodeo in Beebe Park on Sunday, August 7, from 2022, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., with approval of the beer and wine permit and the use of the areas of Beebe Park as shown in the map enclosed.
Support. Motion made and supported. Any discussion?
Just, it was a fantastic event. I was there, Emily, Counselor Allen and I, we volunteered for it, which we will do again, and it was, it was just a great community event, so it was fun, it was going for a good cause, and it just brought people into the park and into the services that city provides, and it was just an enjoyable family time. So I would encourage everybody to look for that and to come on out to it.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Any audience participation in this one? Back to the table. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Item three, Consideration of a Request to Put Up Senior Banners. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider approving a request from Shannon Shuboy on behalf of the Senior Class Parent Committee to utilize the banner arms on the light poles from Park Street to Heritage Drive to place banners supporting the class of 2022. City Council has allowed the last two years, 2000 and 2021, to place banners on the decorative light poles as long as RDBW does the actual installation, and they have again chosen to work with Brett Hardy, who has done the previous two years, knows the size and everything that we need for the banners. So we're in favor of this, the timeline, we usually put them up mid-April and then take them down on June 30. And then there's two conditions, one that DPW does, or that they provide the banners and the necessary zip ties to the DPW, and that there's no guarantees of exact placement of the banners, which student will be on which pole.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve approval of the request to utilize...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I was just checking. To utilize the poles and banner arms from Park Street to Heritage Drive to place banners recognizing the students of the class of 2022 from mid-April through June 30, and to authorize the DPW to install the banners with the following conditions: That the project graduation committee will furnish the banners and all necessary zip ties, and there are no guarantees of exact placement of students on one particular pole or location.
Support. Motion made and supported. Do we have any discussion?
I do have a question. When do our spring banners go up?
At the beginning of spring.
Are they already up now?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like March 20.
Okay, I thought they just went up, so...
Yeah, I think they went up last...
Okay.
Last week.
That's what I thought when we put the lights up, but so our, so the spring banners are now only going to be hung for about a month and a half?
What we do is we put these right over top of them.
Oh, okay.
Is how it's worked out, once we got them up, I believe.
And then when do we switch to summer?
At the first...
Yeah, usually around June...
So instead, that's what I'm just, I guess I'm just not wanting to repeat double work, so we take the students down when we put our summer ones up?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted clarification on. Thank you.
Question. Any other discussion at the table? Any audience participation on this item? Okay.
Being a senior, I thought that's...
Pictures on the lobby later.
Make your own banner, yeah. Thank you.
Oh, um...
There's 114 this year. There's a little typo, a couple typos in there, so yeah, about roughly 114. I don't know if somebody is here from the project graduation committee, so, okay, yeah, I talked to 114, I think.
Yeah, sure, I don't think all the students do it.
Yeah, and it depends on, there are some times that the parents or the student don't want their picture on the banner.
How many poles do we have again?
Um...
Forty?
Yeah, I had that before me, so...
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right, more than the poles.
But what we do is, yeah, because certainly they go all the way down around to 31, but what we've found is that if by going back to back, then we keep them all in the downtown areas, and it's walkable, so if somebody wants to walk along and look at them, they can versus stretching them all the way down to 31 mile. Yeah.
Any more discussion? No? Being none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item number four, Consideration of a Special Event Request, St. Augustine Parish Festival. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from the St. Augustine Catholic Church to have, number one, signage around town, number two, an across-the-road banner, and number three, designate a portion of the Howard Street parking near the church as handicap parking. Cindy Mancheck submitted the three special event requests in conjunction with their annual parish festival, which is scheduled to be held the weekend of August 12 through August 14. The City Council has approved similar requests in previous years. Last year, they did take the year off, so it's coming back, but in essentially the same form as they've done in previous years, so the administration has no concerns on the submittal.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
I believe there may be people from the parish areas.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll just go through all three of them.
Okay.
Is that, or do you want me to do individual?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the special event application from St. Augustine Catholic Church to have six temporary signs in conjunction with their annual parish festival on August 12 through August 14 with the following conditions: The applicant shall work with the city staff on proper placement of the signs to minimize any site visibility issues. Number two, the signs are allowed to be displayed August 1 through August 15, 2022. Did you want me to continue, or do you want to approve everything?
Well, let's...
Prove each one.
You can call for a motion. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. We have a support?
I'll support it.
Thank you. Motion made and supported. Any discussion on this one?
No.
Anything from the audience? Cindy, anything to add? No? Okay. You? Back to the table? Nothing? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, nay. Motion passes. Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the special event application from St. Augustine Catholic Church to have an across-the-road banner in conjunction with their annual parish festival to be displayed August 1 through August 15, 2022, and direct the city clerk to submit the application to MDOT.
Support. Motion made and supported. Any discussions particular to this item? Okay. Yes, yes.
Is there other two locations now where banners can be placed?
Yes.
Yes, there are.
Yep, so normally what we do is, because most traffic will see the southern location, if you just have one banner, we'll place it at the south end, unless your event is more towards the north end, so it'll...
Be more towards forest?
Correct, yes. It'll be that location, yep.
Back to the table. Anything else on this motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
And number three, to approve the request from the St. Augustine Parish Festival to make the 13 parking spaces on Howard Street between the two church driveways handicap parking for the St. Augustine Parish Festival on August 12 through August 14, 2022.
Support. Motion made and supported. Any discussion on this item?
Well, I just want to say I'm glad that they're bringing the festival back, and I just thank Cindy for your hard work for organizing this and filing the proper paperwork, and of course, it's early out, but I, we will start advertising it, I would imagine, soon in July, and announcing it from our, when the mayor gets back. So much success to you on that.
How many years is the festival?
You know how many years? Yeah. No, how many total years has it been going?
I would look it up.
Yeah, it seems like it's been around forever, so I was just curious.
And Counselor Green did bring up a point. If you do create like a flyer for any of the events or the parish festival itself, get them to us, we not only can announce them from our calendar, portion of our agenda, but also put it on our Channel 6.
So, you know, we do contact Channel 6?
Yep.
But I'll reach for flyers.
That'd be great. Yep, yep. Awesome.
And this is Val Ongi, everybody. She's going to be our cheerperson.
Okay.
So she's there just trying to feel her things. Don't worry, it's pretty easy. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any last discussion at the table? No, nothing. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, Consideration of Approving Resolution Number 2022-3, Special Event Request Memorial Day Parade. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider a request from the city to conduct the annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 30, 2022, beginning at 10:00 a.m. This will be the second year that Tim Ricks has coordinated the parade and ceremony on behalf of the VFW. Beginning last year, the event was moved from the, moved to the Veterans Memorial at the Pocket Park there on Main Street between Water and Monroe Streets. That one block of Main Street, once the Memorial Day Parade comes out on the north end at Washington Street and turns south and goes past, that block will remain closed for the ceremony, and people will be able to stand in the street, much like the community tree lighting event. So it seemed to work out well. We also encourage, as you can see from the flyer, kids to decorate their bikes, and people to decorate their golf carts, and come out and participate in the parade.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022-3, which directs the city clerk to apply to the Michigan Department of Transportation to close M19 on Monday, May 30, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. for the purpose of conducting the annual Memorial Day Parade.
Support. Motion made and supported. Do we have discussion? Any audience participation on this item? No? Back to the table. Yeah, I just concur that this, the new location and the new route have been really well-received, and people like it, it's in downtown now. It was nice at the cemetery as well, but it's nice to be there.
I have a comment on the flyer. It, on one of the lower half paragraphs, it says, "The parade route for 2021 has been shortened," so I don't know if they want to...
Oh, no, yeah, 2022.
Or just...
Reword that.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Good catch. Any audience participation? No? Back to the table. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We do have another motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of three wreaths to be placed at the Richmond Cemetery, St. Michael Cemetery, and the Veterans Memorial.
Support. Motion made and supported. Any discussion? Something we've been traditionally doing for a long time, so it's a good thing to have. Any audience participation on this one? No? Back to the table. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for that one. Okay. Item number six, Consideration of Appointing a Council Liaison to the Recreation Board. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider the appointment of an ex officio member of the Recreation Board in accordance with the Recreation Board bylaws. Mayor Ricks currently is serving as the ex officio, and this term expires as of March 31, 2022. I did speak with the mayor, and he is willing to do it if there isn't somebody else who really, really wants it, so...
Okay, great, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint the mayor, Timothy Ricks, as the City Council ex officio member of the Recreation Board with an expiration date of March 31, 2023.
Support. Motion made and supported. Any discussion?
I think he really wants it, too.
He does enjoy being on that.
He enjoys that, that board.
And he does a great job. Okay, any audience participation?
Yes.
Okay, back to the table. Being none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We thank Mayor Ricks for signing up for another year. Thank you. Okay, we have item number seven, City Clerk/Human Resources Assistant Job Description. Mr. City Manager.
City Council is scheduled to consider approving the City Clerk/Human Resources Assistant Job Description. I provided previously a memo regarding my reasonings for placing the additional duties under the job, and based on the email responses that I received from the council, I did place it on your agenda tonight so that we can approve the job description, and that'll allow me to move forward with the search committee and approving the job ad for this position as well.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised, the revised City Clerk/Human Resource Assistant Job Description.
Sorry about that.
I'm just going to just stop reading there.
There you go.
Support.
Sorry, Jamie.
That's okay.
Glad you're reading these. Motion made and supported. Do we have any discussion at the table?
End of the city, the manager's done a lot of extensive, like, working, working with everybody on this, and I think he's done a great job. Quite a list of items there for qualifications.
I agree. Any audience participation? Being none, back to the table?
Quite a list of
Yes.
items there for qualifications.
Any audience participation? Being none, back to the table? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to miscellaneous matters from the city manager.
We're currently working on putting together the city budget. Our first budget workshop is in two weeks on the 18th. My goal is that next Tuesday, which I believe is the 12th, I'll be putting out that first budget packet. Monday, I get a couple department directors that are returning from spring break that I want to have a chance to look at what I've put together this week. And as you can see by the motions tonight, sometimes I need another set of eyes. So Angel will be back Monday. She'll look at all my stuff. On Tuesday, we'll put that budget packet together and I'll deliver it to the houses that, that night. So that'll be the timeline for that packet. Tomorrow, Raw Horn Electric will be back in town, hopefully to finish up the downtown lighting project.
Council comments. Dennis?
Nothing tonight.
John?
Nothing.
Hi. Just that we're getting ready to head into budget, so a reminder that our meetings are earlier and that the public is welcome to come to those as well.
Yeah, I would concur. A lot of, a lot of good things happening here in the city and getting ready for spring and summer. Also want to thank Karen Stagel for her years of service in the city, city clerk. This will be her last meeting, so we do thank you for everything. 35 years is a long time and a great asset to the, to the city.
Great investment.
Yep. Moving on to the calendar, we do have, this is, as was mentioned, a big spring break week. So we have that going on. Also, let's see, we do have this weekend, Saturday, the ninth, is the Easter egg scramble. At Bebe Street Park begins promptly at 10:30 a.m. sharp. So that's when it will happen, so you need to be there on time. And there are different age groups from three to four years old, five to six-year-old, and seven to 10. So please bring your own basket and a bag for getting all the special treats that are going to be there. So that's on the ninth. We also do have Hooks and Needles, which is a knit and crochet group. They do meet every second and fourth Tuesday of the month at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you're interested in that, you can call the library at 586-727-2665 with any questions on that. And we also have, the Richmond VFW has their weekly fish dinner every Friday during Lent. So, and that's from 4:30 to 8 o'clock p.m. at the VFW Hall. It's $10 for all you can eat, so come on out. They do have eat in or carry out. And let's see, we do have, let's see, it takes us up to the, there's a library board meeting on a week from today, Monday, the 11th, at 5:30 p.m. at the library. That is a new time, 5:30 p.m. for that. There is a planning commission meeting on the 14th of April, which is a Thursday, at 7 o'clock p.m. I do not believe we have a BZA. I mean, so we are good there. And that takes us up to the next city council meeting, regular scheduled on the 18th of April at 7 o'clock p.m. However, we do have, as was mentioned, our first city council budget workshop, which will start at 5:30 p.m. that same night before the city council meeting. And then if we need time, we will, after the city council meeting, we'll reconvene for that. Any other calendar items at this time? No? Okay. Moving on, do we have any other business at this time?
Yes, I would ask council to consider approving resolution 2022-4. If you want to pass that along, I did not write up motion, so somebody will have to wing the motion.
I'll be right back.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for the other business item.
Would you like me to wait for the city manager?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I would like to make a motion for resolution 2022-4, a resolution recognizing the retirement of Karen Stagel, who has done a fantastic job for the city, from the city of Richmond.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Well, I'm just going to do, I was going to read it since normally John would have. Whereas Karen Stagel will be retiring from the city of Richmond after serving 35 years as the city clerk, having retired in with the city on March 2nd, 1987. And whereas Karen excelled in providing safe, open, and accurate elections for the city of Richmond, including overseeing 18 city council elections and organizational meetings, while providing the oath of office to six mayors, nine city managers, and many councilors and police officers. Also, whereas, in her role as clerk of the council and custodian of the seal, Karen has not only maintained all city records for 35 years, but has helped to write a part of Richmond's history by taking the minutes for the council planning commission, BZA, TIFA, and personnel board, preserving the official record for future generations. And whereas Karen Stagel has always fulfilled her duties while maintaining a kind and welcoming demeanor with not only the elective officials, with, also with her fellow coworkers, but most importantly, with the residents of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Richmond does hereby urge our citizens to join us in extending to Karen Stagel our deep appreciation for her distinguished service as city clerk for the city of Richmond and extend our very best wishes for her continued success in her life's pursuits.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, for all your years of service. I know you didn't want to make a big deal about it, but we did want to recognize you due to your long history and your great importance in bringing the city and your clerk duties up to the latest technologies and everything too, so well deserved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm shaking. Thank you. We need all those in favor.
Oh, yes. Have a motion on the table? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you so much.
I second it.
Okay. You don't have to write that whole motion, you can just write the top part. But I knew I wanted to read it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other, other business to discuss?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you. Without that, adjournment would be in order.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion made and supported. There is no discussion on adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you all for being here tonight.